Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's two city council meetings. I proudly call our first city council meeting to order, and I kindly ask our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. We welcome all of those who are joining us here in the audience, in the chamber, and those of us online. We begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our alderman from the 4th Ward, Ms. McGowan, to please lead us in the pledge.
My special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jean. Ladies and gentlemen, under Item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations, we have the privilege of recognizing two individuals who are leaving the city of Geneva with respect to their service to our community. The first is joining us virtually. His name is Pat McQueeney. He's been the City Treasurer, ladies and gentlemen, since 2003. Is that amazing? And Pat just, he's in middle school, which makes it all the more amazing. So Treasurer McQueeney, greetings virtually. Thank you very much for being with us.
Greetings, everybody. Yep, almost done with middle school.
Now, truth be told, Pat McQueeney and I went to high school together. He was class of 83. I was class of 82. There was a brief time, I think you actually may have dated my sister for like a week. Is that true?
Sure.
Well, I'm so proud that she didn't settle for you, so... Pat, you've been with us for 18 years. You've seen a lot. You obviously did what everyone else did with respect to their public service. You did it with the best intentions. You helped usher the community through some extraordinarily difficult times. You've helped celebrate some extraordinary, incredible times. Your background is in finance itself, and I know tonight you're working on a deadline, that's why you couldn't join us live, but is there anything you'd like to say before you hang up, as it were?
Well, I don't have a whole lot to say. It's been a pleasure to serve the citizens of the city and serve with the members of the council and the staff. You guys are the ones that do all the heavy lifting. The City Treasurer role is, you know, is one that's in the background and so... But the heavy lifting is done by the folks that I've already mentioned, so I've enjoyed working with you guys.
Thank you very much. To the council, any comments for Treasurer McQueeney, or from the professional staff as well? The floor is open. Alderman McGowan.
Hi, Treasurer McQueeney, AKA Q, which I hear a lot around my house. Thank you so much for your service. I think you do a great job, and it's really cool to see the continuity of your role, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, anything you'd like to say? Pat, guess what? We have a little gift bag for you.
Huh?
You know what this is?
I do not.
It's dinner for you and your wife at the mill race. This is also the very last Pat McQueeney signature stamp that used to appear on all the city employees' checks. So since you're not going to be around, we can give it back to you. And there's a picture of the city council in there as well.
I'll use it on my personal checks now.
And I'll bring that over to your house. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McQueeney.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, our colleague and friend, and of course, Pat is our colleague and friend as well, Alderman McGowan steps down this evening after having served a full term, an exciting term. I will withhold comments until perhaps if Ms. McGowan would like to say a few words. The floor is yours. Of course.
I wrote a little speech.
Good. And we saw somebody come in in a baseball uniform.
Yes, my son, Gabe.
There he is.
Who has joined us this evening. Well, now, I should say, it's usually a busy night in the Letizia McGowan household on Mondays, so we've got baseball, and my daughter running around to work, and my husband roughing lacrosse, and this, that, and the other, so I'm super happy for some representation this evening. Anyway, it has been an honor and privilege to serve on city council over the past four years. I am truly appreciative of everyone who has supported me through this journey, starting with my family and extending to many neighbors, friends, and residents across the city. Thanks to all of the outstanding individuals who work for the city of Geneva in each department, plus the many wonderful people I've met along the way who have ties to our city in one way or another. Thanks to all of those who have served as mentors to me. All of the people I've mentioned contribute to making Geneva the superb city that it is, and you are all to be commended. Being of service to others is something that has been important to me from a very young age, and I am thankful for having had the opportunity to live out this objective as an alderman. I am especially proud of being part of this council that has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to affordable housing in Geneva. This commitment takes compassion, courage, and vision, all of which are qualities that demonstrate excellent, effective leadership, which I have no doubt will continue, and this gives me great peace of mind. It has also been wonderful getting to know my neighbor, Amy Meyer, who I will be proud to have serving as my alderman in the 4th Ward, along with Alderman Cavan. Amy, I wish you great success as you embark upon this journey, and I am excited to see how you will make this role your own. I will still be around town, and you'll find me at Geneva Beautification Committee events and so on. One of my next big roles is that of a college parent, so yep, I blinked. So thank you again, one and all. You've made this experience on city council very fulfilling for me, and I will be forever grateful for this chapter in my life. By the way, since I am leaving, there is an opening for the next vegan alderman on Geneva City Council, so please forward any and all questions to me. Thank you.
Comments from the dais for our friend and colleague, Alderman Bruno.
I just wanted to extend my thanks. I enjoyed serving alongside you. You brought a unique passion to your issues, and I wish you great things whatever you do next.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Cavan, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeanie, I've definitely enjoyed our past two years on the council. I know that we have not always necessarily agreed with our votes, but I certainly do appreciate your passion, and I'd just like to wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Alderman Maladra, then Alderwoman Ruby.
Thank you. Jeanie, like Alderman Cavan, I didn't always agree with your positions, and I didn't always understand your approach, but I always, always appreciated and admired your energy, your conviction, your strength, and your dedication. The community has benefited from that during your term on the council, and because I don't think you can contain it, I have a feeling the community will continue to benefit from that for years to come. Thank you very much for serving. Good luck.
Alderwoman Ruby.
Thank you. I can't believe it's been four years that we've served together. It's been wonderful. I feel like you've been such a role model to the community at large, but also to all of us with your inquisitive nature. You've asked great questions that I don't think anyone else would have thought of in many cases. You're kind. You've always been respectful. You're so committed, and you're so compassionate, and anyone who has ever had any conversation with you of any kind would know that immediately. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you, and good luck with the next chapter. I know our paths will continue to cross with the kids in Geneva, so good luck, Jeanie. Best wishes to you.
Alderwoman Burkhardt.
I first heard of Jeanie Letizia when she was a powerhouse volunteer at Williamsburg, and how awesome to be able to serve with Jeanie McGowan for the last four years. I think you've shown the untapped potential in a lot of people in Geneva that, you know, you came on here like a house on fire, and man, you just devoted yourself to it. You got to know city staff so well. You really threw yourself into this job, and you really treated it like a job, which I think is so admirable, and you're so smart and passionate and empathetic. You really have your tentacles out in the community. You're always having conversations with people, and I know sometimes those, you know, challenged the thoughts you had. I know even when we talked about restaurants and COVID and stuff, and you are being, you know, so empathetic, talking to neighbors who own restaurants, and really kind of taking that all in and figuring out how to move forward. So we're going to miss your energy and your intelligence and your loveliness, and Geneva Trees are going to miss you, but we'll try to do our best to stay green here and to always, you know, continue to respect our Mother Earth. And I know that you're going to take all that energy and passion into a lot of other cool things, so we're not really losing you here in Geneva, and I know we'll continue to be friends and stay in touch. So thanks so much for your service, Jeanie.
Oh, thank you. And may I add, I'm the best, so...
Anyone else? Alderman Casarog.
My time here hasn't been very great, but I just want to say to Jean, or is it Jeanie? I never got that straight, that I just appreciate everybody that's been welcoming, but you really reached out several times to give me, I'll call them little tips and tricks on how to get through what we do here, and I'll never forget that, and I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Alderman McGowan, I echo everything that has been said tonight, and on a personal level, thank you for your friendship. You know, like everyone else on this council knows, that sitting in the audience and then sitting at the dais is an entirely different phenomenon. You handled it with grace. You handled it with dignity, and I, for one, am grateful for those two qualities. Appreciate it very much. And guess what we have for you? This is actually a full ride to college. As long as you're home schooled.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
I believe that was, was that... We'll give it to who? Cavan? Alderman Cavan? Forgive me. Questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, zero absent, the consent agenda has been adopted. Item number, I believe it's nine, incorrect. Number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city administrator to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $2,196,740.23.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that. Some can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in each council member's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, the municipal bills for payment have been approved. Item 12A, ladies and gentlemen, recommend approval of Resolution Number 2021-34 rescinding Resolution Number 2021-32 and authorizing the purchase of a miscellaneous Dell product from SciTech Incorporated in the amount of[963.44][964.08]$97,130. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maladra. Ms. Dawkins, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, all the information was in the packet. The council approved the resolution, offering it to a different company. They couldn't, they found a mistake in their bid. They withdrew their bid, so this is the second lowest bidder, and it's roughly a $1,200 difference.
Any questions or comments from the council? If not, roll call vote. Ms. Dawkins?
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent, item 12A has been adopted. We're at the new business and public comments section. I'll first check with Mr. McCready. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
No one at this time.
Any emails, Ms. Dawkins?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here with us this evening who wishes to address the council? New business from the members of the council? If not, a motion to adjourn this council meeting would be in order. Alderman McGowan makes the final motion of her career, adjourning a meeting. No, careers pick, I'm not saying this one, absolutely not. And of course, there is no second required. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please take a voice vote. Say aye. Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned, folks. We'll just take about a one-minute break, and then we're going to transition to the new city council meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, before we call the next city council meeting to order, it seems only fitting that we would swear in those council members who would be participating in that meeting. Tonight, we have the huge honor of welcoming to the city council chamber the Honorable Elizabeth Flood, Judge of the 16th Judicial Circuit. And I know Judge Flood has a few remarks to make, so Judge, the floor is yours, and we thank you again for being with us.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to take a couple minutes tonight. I wanted to let you know that I just love Geneva. I was born and raised in Elgin, and I have many, many happy memories here of shopping and eating on Third Street, taking my kids to the parks, and attending all of the festivals and events here. I've often said that Third Street is my happy place. Geneva is defined by its downtown, its parks, its schools, its shopping, and its many leisure activities and festivals. And as someone who has worked with local government for over 25 years, first with the state attorney's office and now as a judge, I know that this doesn't all happen by accident. I also know that it's easier to criticize and second-guess the government than to become involved. There are many armchair quarterbacks out there, and words are easier than action. Each one of you is busy with a career, family, interests, and lives, but each of you is willing to give up your time, efforts, and talents to help this city. It's hard to put yourself out there, to put your name on the signs, to give up your free time, and to get involved, but each of you has done this, not just as your job, but in addition to your job. I helped advise the county board as part of my work at the state's attorney's office, and I know that parts of this job may seem mundane. The meetings can be long, the paperwork plentiful, and I won't even talk to you about the pay. But the decisions in this room affect every single citizen in Geneva. You will recognize the accomplishments of its citizens, allocate the tax dollars and fees, shape the planning and design of the downtown and other properties, and help administer important services. I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for your service, your commitment, and having the dedication to get involved, because I know by your actions that you love this city too. Thank you. Now I'm going to administer the oath. The first person is Mike Bruno. Alderman Bruno. If you could raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mike Bruno.
Having been duly elected to the office of alderman.
Having been duly elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next is Brad Casarog. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name. Okay, you can serve him.
Aye, Brad Casarog.
Having been duly elected to the office of alderman.
Having been duly elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Congratulations. Alderman Richard Marx. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Richard Marx.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of alderman.
To the office of alderman.
City of Geneva.
City of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Next is Alderman Becky Ruby. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Becky Ruby.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of alderman.
To the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next is Alderman Amy Mayer. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Amy Mayer.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of alderman.
To the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next is Alderman Robert Swanson. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Robert Swanson.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of alderman.
To the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And then finally, the mayor, Kevin Burns. Hey, dude, nice to see you. Oh, my gosh. So cute. A lot of blue eyes. And sparkles. All right. You're going to raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Burns.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of mayor of the city of Geneva.
To the office of mayor of the city of Geneva.
County of Kane.
County of Kane.
Do here, I'm sorry, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, forget it. Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's council meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city administrator to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
This would be like Abbott and Costello.
To begin tonight's meeting, ladies and gentlemen, I would do all city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask the newest member of the council, and I would kindly like to ask her in person, do you prefer alderwoman or alderman? Alderman Mayor, to lead us in the pledge. alderman mayor, to lead us to the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Mayor. I keep saying that. It's gonna be, it's gonna be. Ladies and gentlemen, under item three, item three A, consider mayor's appointment of Roger Gaudskesen to city clerk for the city of Geneva. All of you received an email from, I believe it was Friday, regarding the reappointment of Mr. Gaudskesen. I'm hoping that you will not only entertain, but support that recommendation. Is there a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Alderman Kilburg makes the second. Any questions or comments? If not, a roll call is in order.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kocarog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item three B, consider mayor's appointment as Alderman Craig Maladra as mayor pro tem of the city of Geneva. Alderman Marks makes the motion.
Second.
Alderwoman Burkhardt makes the second. Any questions or comments? Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kocarog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye, abstain.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
With the vote of nine in the affirmative, one abstention, zero absent, Alderman Maladra is duly elected mayor pro tem. Thank you, sir. Item three C, consider mayor's reappointment of city officials. All of the council members have in their packet the list of city officials to be reappointed. They come with the highest recommendations of myself and the city administrator, of course, she being one of those officials to be reappointed. And I hope that all of you will consider this as yet more continuation of excellence by our city staff. And I wholeheartedly encourage you to vote yes. Is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Kocarog makes the motion. Swanson makes the second. Any questions? Any comments? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Kocarog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marks.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
With the unanimous vote, the officials are so reappointed. Thank you all very, very much. Item three D is to proclaim May the 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week. Is there a motion? Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Oh. Alderwoman Ruby makes the second. Any questions? Any comments? A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you. Folks, we are at the new business section. First, I will ask Mr. McCready, is anyone online wishing to speak tonight?
No one online raising their hand at the moment.
Ms. Dawkins, any emails to be read into the record?
No, sir.
New business from the city council. Alderman Mayor, anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to thank Jean McGowan. Actually, I'd like to thank Jean McGowan, because she told me to turn my mic on earlier.
Did she?
That she was part of our conversation, that I should definitely remember to turn my mic on. But also, she helped me tremendously throughout this process. So, I don't know if she's still here, but her help was much appreciated. She also told me to thank my husband, and my son, and my, my mother-in-law for their help and support through this whole process.
Always a good advice.
Very good advice. She's full, full of good advice.
Full of good advice. Anyone else on the dais? If not, I hope the council will indulge me. Oh, yes, Alderwoman Burkhardt, excuse me.
I just want to welcome our new alderman, and we're really looking forward to getting to know you. I know all of us will be happy to continue any advice you need. I think I heard, did I hear your dad was a former alderman?
Yeah, my dad was the alderman of the third ward.
That's right.
Yeah, for eight years.
Long medal.
Yes.
Great. Well, we're really excited to have you here. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Forgive me for the interruption. If you'll indulge me, ladies and gentlemen, I do have some remarks to deliver. First, let me begin by thanking Judge Flood again for honoring us this evening, for making the swearing-in ceremony not only memorable, but meaningful. I've had the pleasure of knowing Judge Flood for many, many years, and we were just very, very grateful to be able to secure her this evening. As some of you may or may not know, the moment after an election, all the judges get their phones are ringing off the hook to book people for this particular type of ceremony. She was gracious enough to accept right away, so we're delighted. Members of the city council, city of Geneva professional staff, members of the city boards and commissions, and ladies and gentlemen, I want to begin tonight with a message to our neighbors in Geneva who have lost friends and colleagues to COVID-19. I share your grief, and I know this council shares your grief as well, and we wish you peace and comfort in the memories of those who passed. To those who battled the disease on the front lines, at our hospitals, retirement homes, long-term healthcare centers, schools, businesses, and elsewhere, thank you for your service. History will indeed bestow upon you the appreciation you deserve. As I embark on my 21st year as being mayor of Geneva, it's worth recognizing that the room we gather in this evening is emblematic of the many changes that have occurred throughout Geneva's 186 years. Where all of us sit now was once filled with guest chairs that faced north. The dais was behind a railing. Professional staff sat at the table before the council, and the council sat in chairs raised above the staff. The mayor, city attorney, and city administrator sat in chairs raised even further still. The conference room to my right was merely storage for old files and miscellaneous stuff. The kitchen area around the corner where Ms. Fenari is standing didn't even exist. And since 1912, when City Hall was built after a fire that destroyed the previous structure, this chamber has been the birthplace of new ideas, new neighborhoods, new businesses, new policies, new plans, new strategies, goals, and objectives for an always newer, better, and hopefully more inclusive Geneva. And in the old days, the council, staff, petitioners, and guests would fill the room with as much cigarette smoke as they would with a vocabulary that many of us would find very peculiar today. This very room was once the cultural seat of Geneva. Theatrical and musical performances were held on the stage behind the Northern Wall, which now houses our IT staff and historic preservation staff. And to my left, stretching from east to west, above the alderman present, was the balcony seating for performances that took place, and now housed our building commissioner, our building inspector, and our code enforcement officer. In just 109 years, this building has not just seen Geneva evolve. It has been where evolution of our community was encouraged, embraced, signed, sealed, and delivered. This room still echoes with the discussion, debate, and disagreement of years gone by, and no doubt will continue to do so in the weeks, months, and years ahead. Some of the echoes of yesteryear were inspiring, and some sadly haunting. Moments ago, we completed the solemn exercise of taking our oath of office to serve Geneva to the best of our ability. Now, of course, our ability individually and collectively is often subject to interpretation by the decisions we make as a body. I say to all of you, the city council, the professional staff, those tuning in, that you have my unequivocal commitment to serve to the best of my ability regardless of political consequences. It's worth noting that the oath of office we all just repeated, all 65 words, is void of the word unless, and void of the word until. While I'm not certain these omissions were intentional, I do appreciate their relevance. Therefore, we haven't sworn to do our best unless the pressure becomes so intense that we do what is expedient. And we haven't sworn to do our best until we can find a way to avoid controversy and contention. There is no doubt, and I know all of you will agree, that we serve in an era of rising acrimony, both online and in person. When threats, accusations, or intimidation are sown, we must do all we can to prevent those seeds from taking root. And when dog whistles are sounded, we must not be reticent. We must respond with sirens of actualities and veracity. To do anything less is to be complicit. And being complicit degrades the offices we hold, the body we represent, and the community we serve. And as we continue to mature as a community, we must marshal the strength to identify and face our imperfections forthrightly and intrepidly. By doing so, no matter how uncomfortable or painful it may be, we will force open the iron gates of constraint and contentment, and more clearly pursue who and what Geneva aspires to be. In a world where tweets, Instagram posts, or Facebook discourse is substituted for thoughtful, respectful, civil, and factual debate, we as elected officials must not be provoked to take action prematurely as a means of satisfying the loudest voices, nor be seduced into thinking that the amount of shares or likes somehow fortifies such commentary as a pervasive and binding creed. Instead, we must affirm our fidelity to the oath of office we took tonight, and consider each and every issue that may come before us objectively, and refrain from taking a position on items until they are fully vetted by the city's advisory committees, commissions, and boards, those organizations that we appoint and those organizations that we respect. It's not easy, I know. In fact, it's darn right hard. Looking ahead to the next four years, Geneva will once again be presented with countless opportunities and prodigious challenges. We will conduct meetings in front of empty council chambers, and we will host meetings with standing-room-only conditions. And our meetings will be broadcast and archived for all the world to see. Throughout it all, of course, we will apply the patience necessary while considering all relevant perspectives and viewpoints. Over the course of the next 1,463 days, I invite this council and this community to help build Geneva upon the cornerstones laid by the citizens and businesses of Geneva that make the foundation for our 2025 strategic plan: strong governance, excellent city services, economic development, environmental stewardship, and quality of life. Each keystone ensures that the Geneva of tomorrow will be stable, sturdy, and sound. Now, I am grateful to many people this evening. To those who supported my desire and passion to continue serving, and yes, even those who thought it best I be retired. The latter group helped me understand what really matters in this world, and the former group inspired me to remain positive and above the fray. And to be clear, the oath of office I swore to earlier this evening calls on me to serve everyone with the same energy, enthusiasm, and excitement. I answer that call by stating to all of you that you have my word, I will do exactly that. Excuse me. I wish my dad were here tonight. And I hope he's proud of his youngest son. My mom is here, of course. She's always stood next to me, no matter where and no matter what. My three daughters, Emma, Grace, and Florence are also with us tonight. My daughters have always been and will always be the brightest stars in my constellation. And to my grandkids, one of whom you can hear, Micah, Bosco, and Murphy, who have literally, literally traveled and lived all over the world. You've helped me make my world a more beautiful place. And to the woman who was crazy enough to agree to have dinner with me when I artfully crossed her path in the parking lot of Kenton Court 11 years ago, my north star, Amy. Amy knows me better than I know myself. She knows the joy and perils of public life because she has seen, felt, and endured the impact of both on me and on our life together. I love you with all my heart. As our community begins to shed the chrysalis that was 2020 and a good part of 2021, a shell that protected us from harm and provided us health and safety to embrace what's next, let us emerge, take flight, in pursuit of Geneva's potential and promise. With that, I thank you all, and I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks.